All right, we're about ready to get started. All right, the Bothell City Council is back from its recess. I believe our AV system is back up and running. So, we're going to start where we left off with AV 16-221, which is the continuing public hearing meeting for the 2006 Union Conference of Plan and Related Code Amendments. And Mr. Boyd, I believe you were researching a question from the deputy mayor when we left off? How's that going?
Yes, so it had to do with an email that the council received from Jean Zorn's. And I've had a chance in the break to see that. And it had to do with adding something to 11.16.03, the general provisions for development agreements. Those are, as the title states, very general provisions. And her suggestion was to add something to provide protection for adjoining neighborhoods and historic and cultural resources. The general provisions do include such things as buffers, mitigation measures that reference CIPA, which does include historical and cultural resources and aesthetics. So, we think that those general provisions are adequate. And as we develop the campus master plan and the development agreement, we can certainly add specific language under these general provisions, add specific language to protect not only generally the adjacent neighborhoods, but potentially even specific features and amenities in those neighborhoods. So, that would be our approach. And our campus representative also agreed with that approach.
I guess I'm just, I'm wondering if we could add something that talks about honoring the established integrity of the neighborhood. Something like that.
Well, and I think that's-
That's pretty general.
Yeah, I think that is there in the mitigation measures. But, so, you certainly can. We, in our amendments, we've included that section, but we're not proposing any, that isn't a section that we're actually proposing any changes, so. And we hadn't anticipated proposing any changes there.
You still have the floor, deputy mayor?
I, I think I'm being told no. But I'm not quite sure.
I don't believe so.
The council can propose specific changes that they wish. We think that they're covered, that that concern is covered, and that we will be addressing even more specific concerns as the, as the master plan and development agreement are developed.
I can, I'll review and if I, if I want it, I guess I'll send you an email if I see a specific number that I'd like to add some language to.
Just real quick, deputy mayor on that. And I think Councilmember Ragnar had something he wanted to say along those lines.
I'd support some, some verbiage that would help protect some of the neighborhoods in that area. I think, I think that would be a nice touch.
So, just out of curiosity for process, Mr. Boyd, if we want to make a recommendation of language change from the dice tonight, we can, we can do that and, by motion, I would imagine, or at least you want some sort of consensus tonight because you need it, because it comes back in final form to be approved at the next meeting on the 27th?
Well, we're asking council to make preliminary approval of the campus and Williamson planning code amendments tonight. So, if there are changes that you have in mind, we would like specific language proposed, and then we will include that in that final packet. But, we weren't anticipating any additional deliberations on these two items beyond tonight.
Alrighty, I think you're about ready to get another one. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. And I've put a suggested language change in front of each of you. It's, it's got at the top, attachment three, and it's actually page 154 of the agenda packet. And I'm thinking that making this change might go some distance in addressing the concern expressed by Ms. Zorn's, and then also by other council members. So, we've heard previously in testimony this concern about the difference between a major and a minor amendment, and how major amendments would go to council for review, but minor amendments would not. And the concern expressed was that, well, when you look at it, minor amendments are either those that don't require expansion of the campus district, or don't require a supplemental environmental impact statement. And so, the first concern was that having a supplement to the environmental impact statement is incredibly high threshold. You have to make a pretty big change to trigger a change to the EIS. So, meeting that threshold would be difficult. And also, there was the concern expressed that it's the campus who, in being the CIPA responsible official, would have influence on determining whether a change was either a minor or a major amendment. And so, what I have proposed is to remove the distinction between major and minor amendments, and then just have it read that amendments would have, amendments to the development agreement or the campus master plan would have to come back to council for approval. This is, this is, I think staff had said earlier that they were concerned about council getting into quasi judicial proceedings, but this isn't a quasi judicial proceeding. If we, if we are able to hear a major change, a major amendment, and that's a legislative change, then a minor amendment is a legislative change. And we're talking about it being a legislative change to a legislatively decided campus master plan and development agreement. So, by making this change, we are not committing the council to quasi judicial hearings. We're not, we're not hearing a particular project proposal. But if, for example, the campus submitted a proposal or an application to staff, well, if it didn't meet with the, the provisions of the campus master plan and development agreement, they can do one of two things. They can modify their proposal so that it is consistent with those two documents, or they can come to us and ask for a change in the two documents. So, and I think, I think what we hear from the, from the community, from the neighborhood, is they're, they're afraid that a change could be slipped in after the fact. I think they are, they are hopeful and encouraged by the public process that will establish the campus master plan and development agreement, but they're concerned that amendments and changes could be made after the fact. So, and then in the staff box, it even says, "As the campus master plan is developed in the coming months, we may identify one or more additional thresholds that would also be appropriate to include in the development agreement." So, why not take this approach now where we say all changes come to us? And then, if we get more information as the process unfolds, we find those additional thresholds. But then it becomes clear, and the community understands, and, and they're not asked to make a decision in advance of information versus after the information.
So, could I, can you get the floor for a second?
Yes.
Can I ask you? So, it says in that section, so the page above it, a couple pages above it. But it's, basically, it's the 1264-108, the campus district requirements. You have the charts, and then you've got the special campus district requirements is B. And it goes into how the master plan will be adopted. It says it will be, it'll go through five different, at least a minimum of five different meetings of the city council, and then it'll be approved by the University of Washington, Bothell, and Cascadia College and the city council. So, the original master plan is, that's going to be created, is going to have a separate process? Then the, I think where you're, where you're pointing out is that, are you not seeing that the same way? That the, the later language is about future changes to the master plan that we work on together with the community here?
Right, so the first part, the first part of the language that you cite, which is the development of the campus master plan and the development agreement, do that really nice public process where people feel like they have an opportunity to comment, and it's an iterative process. And then, so then council approves that. But what happens if there are changes needed after that approval? And that's what this language that I've got before you, page 154, addresses. That once you have that campus master plan and development and agreement, what do you do if the campus wants to change it? And the community has expressed concern. Well, what, what means minor and what means major? Because I believe, well, one member of the public told me that they either had meeting notes or was at a meeting where the OTAC engineers said clearly, "Well, you know, we can change the location of the dorms, and that wouldn't trigger a change to the EIS." And so, that really concerned them. Because they could, under this definition, that would be a minor amendment because it would not trigger a supplemental EIS. They could change the location of the dorms after this campus master plan had already gone through that five public meeting process. So, this, this is the process for changing it. And again, it just brings any amendment back to council review. And we may find through the campus master planning process that there are finer thresholds. But let's, let's use that process to determine those thresholds when we have that information. Let's not just, I, I feel like that's too big of a door to open, to define a minor amendment so broadly in a situation where it probably, it would probably never trigger, a change might never trigger a major amendment. And so, council would not have review of that. That would just be a staff review item.
Got it. Can we turn it over to staff, or?
Yeah, and just, and then if it is a staff review item only, then that doesn't have as much public input as if that would, that same amendment process came to us.
So, I imagine this was the, this was the change that you had a chance to discuss with U-Dub and Cascadia representatives before the meeting?
No, during the meeting. We, I didn't get this, and they didn't get this until after the meeting started. And so, I would point out that the, the language as drafted does provide that a minor amendment can be appealed to the hearing examiner. So, there would be a public hearing at that point. The concern expressed by the campus representatives is, just has to do with the time for doing a minor amendment through the council process. And, and I'd like to give them a chance to, to address this proposed change as well.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Pat Schneider, the Special Assistant Attorney General representing the University of Washington. The, the principal concern, I believe, is, is eliminating the distinction between a major and a minor amendment. The specific standards for that distinction, we really can't draw until we know what the campus master plan looks like. And for example, once we know it, we may be able to call out specific code sections and subsections that if, if they need changing, those come to the council. So, there's, there's a world of opportunity to be specific, once we know what the campus master plan looks like. But the distinction between a major and a minor, a major and minor amendment is a crucial one that I, it would be very difficult for the university to behave in a, you know, in a, in a way that is really in the best interest of the university or the community if they are looking at an open-ended legislative process with no time limits and no standards for a minor change. And I think we can all agree, once we know what the campus master plan looks like, what should be major and what should be minor. But I would urge you to maintain the distinction so that there is an opportunity later on to say some things are so minor that, and so consistent with the intent and purpose and spirit of the campus master plan that they don't need months of open-ended process and can be dealt with by an appeal to the hearing examiner or by staff. Every similar document that I'm aware of, all of the major institution master plans in the city of Seattle, for example, have major and minor amendment distinctions in them. There are other regulations, like, you know, shoreline permits, where you can make minor amendments without having to go through a new process. I think that concept of a minor amendment with a minimal process is an important one that needs to be maintained in order for future development to happen in a reasonably efficient manner. And the more opportunity there is for minor amendments, I think the more comfort level there will be on the part of the institutions in having a detailed campus master plan. If they know that every little change, you know, in light of changed circumstances has to invoke a new legislative process, I think it would be natural that there will be reluctance to have the level of detail that everyone would like in the master plan because that will bind, you know, future generations or people, you know, three or four years from now, the world will change. There may be a real need that everyone agrees is useful and needed. But if it, again, if you have to start an open-ended legislative process, there's going to be reluctance to do it. So, I would urge the council to maintain the distinction between a major and a minor amendment, and allow this issue of how you draw that distinction to be brought back to you once we have a campus master plan and we know what it's proposed to look like.
So, I mean, in reading these two things that would trigger you into a major amendment, from what I understand, it could take a lot to require a supplemental environmental impact statement or to expand the district campus. And those are the only two things we have in our packet? That would, that would say, okay, if you did one of those two things, you're in a major amendment. So, everything else is minor, and it doesn't come back to council. And I guess that's the concern.
And, and I agree that we need more detail. And, but we can't draw, as a practical matter, we would be making it up out of whole cloth until we have a draft campus master plan. So, I, I'm not in any way suggesting that the university would resist including detail when we get around to adopting the campus master plan. Absolutely, it is needed. It's in the university's interest, as well as the community, to have precise standards that everyone understands. So, the detail needs to be there, but I don't know how we draw it until we have a draft campus master plan. And we know, for example, how much specificity there's going to be with regard to the individual building sites. Once we know that, then we can draw those distinctions. So, absolutely, it's in everyone's interest that there be more detail. I'm just suggesting we defer that until we have a draft campus master plan. And all I would urge you to do tonight is to maintain the distinction between major and minor. How you draw that distinction could be the subject of the next go-round when we come back to you.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm taking my turn to talk about it. I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we just deferred to the later approval process for when we have major and minor plan changes. Because right now, just looking at these two things, I see, I see Councilmember Sandberg's concern, and I, I just, I think it, like you said, like, if we had it all vetted out, and we could figure out what is a minor and a major, and get that actually in the language instead of having something like this for an interim, I don't know how we're going to craft that from the dice tonight. But, yeah, it just made, it'd make more sense to me that we, I'm okay with saying there's going to be minor and major code amendments, but this is defining them. And so, I have some concern about that.
Well, it, one way to do it and would be to say that a minor amendment, the distinction between a major and a minor amendment will be set forth in the campus master plan. That's in effect what we're saying. We could, I suppose, if Dave is willing, we could go away and try and come up with language that says that, and just defer the whole issue, but, but maintain the distinction. I think we, we need direction from the council so that we can start working on that distinction as we develop, develop it. If there is no distinction, then it's a little hard to invest the, the energy and the effort into drawing, drawing it.
Understood. And that's the only comment I actually had for, for this item. Is there somebody else that would like to speak to this? Or ask questions, I should say, I'm sorry. Councilmember Spivey.
I think what was just presented is a good compromise just to memorialize tonight the fact that we'll address the, what is a major and minor through that process that's coming up. I think that's a good compromise, moves us on tonight. But we address it as we go through that comp plan amendment. And I saw a few of the neighbors nodding their head that, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. So, I would be supportive of that.
Well, this is to do a round of comments first. Do you guys have any thing to add to either of these items? Well, you already got to speak to you. So, we're proposing to do another round? All right, let's do another round. Councilmember Sandberg.
So, an alternative would be in letter D, you could have it structured the same as A, where you would say, "A major amendment is an amendment, colon, 1, that is not a minor amendment, 2, to be whatever, further determined in the campus master plan process, and 3, something about, something that has, you know, immediate impacts or effects to the surrounding single-family neighborhoods or its surrounding neighborhood." Because that's what they're concerned about.
Is that it? Deputy Mayor.
I completely agree that waiting until we've got a master plan in place before we decide to define major and minor makes sense. I also think, you know, minor, for sure, should not be at council whim because things change on council. And so, I think there should be some consistency apart from council when it comes to determining some of this stuff. Is now a good time to talk about the language? Okay, so, I wanted to propose, back to my original comments on page 146. I'll let you tell me what you, if you think it makes sense. Originally, I was thinking, just to add on to number three, location of buffers landscaping or open space. But I think, actually, now that I read that, I'll, I'll propose a 13, which is provisions to protect the integrity of established neighborhoods. And we can add buffers in there or whatnot, but I think the idea-
So, you could clarify, Deputy Mayor, where are you at?
We're back to page 145, which is development, general provisions of development agreements. But 13 is, would be on page 146.
And so, you'd want to add to that list?
Provisions to protect the integrity of established neighborhoods.
Provisions to protect-
The integrity.
The integrity.
Of established neighborhoods.
Sounds pretty reasonable to me. Is there anybody on council that has a problem adding that general provision? No? University of Washington representative? Kelly. Are you okay with adding a general provision that's been requested? It's wonderful. All right, we're good to go. Okay, so now, back to the other issue. Is there anything that anybody wants to talk about the Williamson?
So, is staff going to talk about the addition to defining what major amendment is versus minor amendment and get back to us?
I was stalling for them, just to, they're working on it right over there. Is there any changes to the Williamson code amendments that, from council while we're on this item? No. How are we going? How are we doing for?
So, none, none on Williamson?
Didn't look like it.
It's good to go?
Yep.
Okay. So, can you go back to the overhead? If council wants to consider the, the amendments to 3D here that Councilmember Sandberg wrote out, I'll need to have her read those again. The, the one change that, that I was thinking could be made to 3A. Well, first of all, under 3, I think that the stricken language there probably should be replaced with "an" instead of "the." So, we're introducing the possibility of an amendment. And then, under 3A, change that. Insert "after a minor amendment will be further defined in the campus master plan and will, will include amendments, colon, so, so the supplemental environmental impact statement and expansion of the district will be included. But we have language here saying that it will be further defined in this campus master plan. And then, Councilmember Sandberg had some specific suggestions for 3D. And I'll amend that to say that it'd be further defined in the development agreement.
So, is there any way you could write that down for us? We've got a couple councils, we're, we're all on probably different pages. Oh, there we go. Look at that.
Can you read my scroll?
So, everything that's there has been, is going to be stricken, including D? All right, D's not stricken, so are you going to strike D?
No. Councilmember Sandberg suggested striking this. This would be, so, our proposal would be to leave that language there, add that clarity. And then, Councilmember Sandberg had some additions to D to specify more about what major amendments would be.
Okay, so you'd make the addition and then take away all the struck out, strikeout stuff? And leave B, C, and D in, in its entirety?
Yes. But I didn't get the language that Councilmember Sandberg was proposing for 3D.
No, she was just crossing stuff out for D, but.
No, she proposed, if we could get that now, that'd be good. I can add that to my list.
Yeah, well, he's got that piece of paper ready to go so we can add it and see it, please. Councilmember Sandberg.
So, can you put the one that you wrote up on? You wrote on?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. So, in D, it could say, "A major amendment will be further defined in the development agreement and will include amendments I that are not minor amendments and II." Do not result- Well, we could, we could reuse that language. That do not impact the integrity of established neighborhoods. Or directly impact the integrity of established neighborhoods.
If I could address that second proposal, a major amendment is in effect a legislative action. It will come back to you. And it would be unusual to have a code provision that bound your legislative discretion. Normally, you know, you can do anything you want when you're acting legislatively, as long as it's consistent with state law. And certainly, I would defer to your city attorney, but it's, the general principle is one council cannot bind future councils, councils to legislative actions. So I would suggest if you, you, you don't need that language and you would be creating an unnecessary legal issue. The, the standards really come into the minor amendment because those won't come to you and you need to give staff and the hearing examiner standards to abide by. But for a major amendment, I, I would suggest you've, you've preserved your legislative discretion and future council's discretion if you just say it's not a minor amendment.
Can we just ask the city attorney real quick? Do you concur with that?
Sorry, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Sandberg.
There, there is a huge difference to the community when they have to respond, when they have to find out that there has been a director's decision like in a minor amendment, and then figure out how to appeal it to the hearing examiner. If anybody's ever gone through that process, it's, it's very difficult and it's unsatisfying in the end because the hearing examiner will only uphold exactly what's written in the code. And I've been through that process several times and it, it rarely ends up being satisfying to the, the citizen appellant. And so that's why I'm concerned that this is a chicken egg, chicken and egg argument. What I've heard is, once we look at the campus master plan, then we'll know the details. So let's keep the door open now. And my point is, once we look at the campus master plan, we, the, the door is a little closer, closed now, and we can open it up when we have the details. I, I want to emphasize that going through a director approval and hearing examiner appeal process is very difficult for the public. Very difficult. And that's exactly what they've asked us to do in that, in that latest statement is, that is, that is their preferable option. And I can see why. But, you know, I'm comfortable that this is now on our radar, that we are going to be looking really closely at what a minor and a major amendment is going forward, and that the public is going to be really looking at that closely. So if, if you're not gonna accept the language in, in D, then I would hope you would at least accept the language in A.
All right, let's hear from, oh, sorry, you're done. Let's hear from other council members and just weigh in on this, and so we can move on. Council, Deputy Mayor.
I accept and agree with the language in A. I'm concerned about defining a major amendment as not being something. I, I would prefer to wait until the master plan's finished to make those definitions.
Are you okay with the amendment at the beginning of the statement, whereas as a major amendment will be further defined in the development agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Who else would, would like to weigh in? Councilmember McNeil?
I just wanted to clarify, is, are we adding that statement in II also in 13 on page 145, or?
Yes, that we already went over that, right? That was the addition that Deputy Mayor, and it seemed like there was a unanimous actual support for it.
Okay, so it's in both places, is what I'm hearing.
No, no, no. This is, so what we're discussing is on the screen right now, is under three. So A, it's all the strikeout stuff, that's gone, is what the proposal is. And the additions would be on A. The additional say will further be defined by the development agreement and will include amendments. I think we can just stop with defining in the development agreement. And then in D, the addition would be, will be further defined in the development agreement. And then Councilmember Sandberg would like to add at the bottom there, I and II. And so we need you to weigh in on if you agree with those changes or not. Does that make sense? Go ahead, hit your button.
Yes, I do agree with the, the changes, but I still want to clarify. Is II the same as what's in 13 on 145?
Essentially, but so you heard from our city attorney and the University of Washington City Attorney that there could be some legal issues with adding I and II to the statement because it binds the future legislative body of the City of Asheville to abiding by those when that's typically not something you would want to do as a council.
Okay, so I would agree with not including those.
Not including I and II?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Spivey.
I would concur with my fellow council member on not including I and II. If that's going to present legal challenges, why would we set ourselves up for that?
Just for clarity, you're okay with the other additions of further defined by the development agreement?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Agnew.
I agree with A and not including I and II.
You got yourself a majority there.
Can, can you just read it from the, from the beginning to the end? So, because we say we don't agree with I and II, and people aren't saying that it's DI and II, not A.
Sure. So going back to 3A, it will now read, a minor amendment will be further defined in the development agreement and will include amendments, colon, with impacts that do not require supplemental EIS and two that do not require expansion of the campus district. And then 3D will read, a major amendment will be further defined in the development agreement and is an amendment that is not a minor amendment. And then it goes on as it is.
Is that what everybody thought they were voting on when we talked about I and II? Okay. All right. Are you okay, Kelly? All right, making sure. We're done with that one. So now we're moving on. We ready? You have your direction?
And so do we have, I guess what we wanted to ensure that we have preliminary approval on, on both Williamson and, and campus. So we can bring back the final language, but we're not anticipating any further deliberations on these two on the 27th.
I hope not.
Okay.
Do you want to vote? Like a formal vote? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right. I can't make a motion, so good luck whoever wants to try to make this motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Prelimarily.
Preliminary code amendments, as previously discussed and changed.
Okay.
As previously discussed and changed. All right. So we have a motion by the Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember Spivey to preliminary approve the proposed campus and Williamson Plan and Code Amendments with the changes discussed this evening. Something like that? Is that agreeable? Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any, there's this motion, a second, is there any deliberation on the motion?
So this is just preliminary approval. It doesn't constitute our one change for the year. We're not going to make that mistake like we did almost last week.
That's right.
Okay.
I just confirmed with Scott Masal as well, just making sure we don't want to go down that road. So the preliminary approval is okay.
Yeah, we don't want to be like Samamish. I think it was Samamish that did that, right? It was in the paper. Okay. So is there any deliberation on the motion? See, none. Go ahead and cast your vote. Our lights are blinking, by the way, city clerk. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. And now we're moving into the public media, or to the portion of this agenda item that is the proposed Fitzgerald findings, conclusion, and actions. And we have Mr. Blackburn.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is, of course, a public hearing, and I want to identify a few clarifications. Councilmember Sandberg identified some items that I want to make sure and bring up to the council's attention. One is, of course, that their capacity number in the findings has been changed. That was one, an item that was identified last week. I did make sure to include the incentive numbers within that, so we basically did that within the findings. There was an errant strike through within the Canyon Creek 39th Avenue Sub area plan draft under policy LUP four on page 198. And basically, there was a strike through through the LID after the 5100A that was not supposed to be there. Clearly, the idea is that within the Canyon Creek Sub area, we're not making any changes to the circumference of plan or the zoning classifications. Now, one of the things that we wanted to do, oh, I'm sorry, there was one more thing in Canyon Creek, and there was some discussion about should or shall in one of the policies. And there was a should, whether there should be a shall. We proposed to make all those shaws. We think that's the better way to go with those things, and that would be on page 199, in case you're following. That's basically what a change we would make sure we do. One of the items that Councilmember Sandberg identified that I think we wanted to address with the council was that there was some discussion on the 5th, November 15th about how we didn't want to have stormwater vaults within the areas counted for open space as part of our clustering provisions. And there was some discussion, okay, well, maybe we should do ponds. And I think what happened is that we crafted some language and it got put in an area where it wasn't supposed to be. And that basically what it is, that there's a preceding provision about how, what type of surface water facilities we want to do. And it also includes no vaults. And I guess I want to make sure I understand clearly from the council what the intent was, which was, we want to make sure that within the areas that are credited for open spaces part of a clustering, we don't allow basically stormwater vaults or underground stormwater facilities. But in other locations within the Fitzgerald Sub area, we can have underground vaults. And that was a clarification that I would like to have the council make for us. Then we have a couple of changes from Councilmember Sandberg again, and this is on a sheet. I'm going to put it over on the overhead. On page 207 of the draft regulations, she's identified that where the special studies provisions are identified, there is a reference to the North Creek Protection Area, and we want to take that out. The ideas behind it is the special studies are supposed to be provided for, for, within both the Zone One and the rest of the areas. We want to basically take this language that says only within the North Creek Protection Area as applied. And that's basically one of the things we want to make sure and do. One of the things that she's, I'm sorry. One of the things she's also identified, she's also had the request to have approximate location of groundwater on the site. That'd be one of the things that would be provided with the special study. Now, we know for sure that there's groundwater throughout this entire area. We've got really good evidence about there's a deep-seated regional aquifer, and then there's kind of the shallow localized aquifer. So we know there's groundwater. And I guess what I was gonna, I'm gonna propose a question. Is it depth to groundwater you're more interested in versus location? Because we know that location, there's groundwater everywhere within there. So that'd be a question I would pose to Councilmember Sandberg on that one. I just about lost that. Also, Councilmember Sandberg's got a couple of changes she'd like to make within the Sub area plan language. One, of course, is, let me get this where you can see it here. One is that she'd like to add some language, make a reference to the oh, the Watershed Company ICF report. It's basically one of the exhibits within our record that basically talks about how it's a, it's the highest designation assigned to three of six. Usually, we don't like to have, make a reference to a specific report in our Cubs, our Sub area plans or the circumference of plan. One of the things we just went through when we did our recent 2015 update was, we were finding all these old references to these old outdated studies that, that kind of add some problems. And so that was the idea behind putting the language in there about how it does have a moderate to high assessment valuation. Maybe there's another way we can speak to that language that still gets to what Councilmember Sandberg would like to achieve. But usually, we try not to refer to a specific study within the Sub area plan. Another one she's identified here is a request to have, oh, that's really hard to see. It basically says evaluation of groundwater location. And again, we know the location is throughout the entire area. Perhaps what Councilmember Sandberg is looking for is maybe depth to the groundwater. And finally, Councilmember Sandberg is proposing, I believe, to remove some language that says, and which are located in areas with source with a high rate of infiltration. That's something I would have to check with parametrics on. This is language that they proposed that we, we put in here. And because I, I haven't had a chance to speak with them, I would be really reluctant on changing this until I had a chance to look at, have their input on that type of a change. And finally, Councilmember Sandberg correctly points out, there's a couple of places where we don't have an A or a B or something like that. One of the things I'm proposing with the, the next round is to make sure and go through and scrub all those things, make sure all the references are there, and do a full and complete numbering system, because there is a couple of other locations where that's occurring. So that's the changes from the council so far. So I guess we can go one by one on those items.
We just got this information, so it's going to take us a minute to try to go through it?
Yes.
Unless somebody's ready to go? Maybe a few minutes. All right. Anybody ready to go?
I could speak to some of this. I should have wrote down what, the specific things you'd like us to answer, so.
We can start with what's on the screen there, number four.
Yeah, that's, that's the one, that's the easy one. So what, so I do stormwater management professionally for a while now. And what I, what I had concern about wasn't just vaults specifically, it was about stormwater facilities being in critical areas, critical area buffers, or the set aside vegetation area. Period. Anyhow, I don't care which, which one or what type of facility, what it's made out of. With one exception, that you can actually disperse stormwater into a forested area. I think that's appropriate. But outside of that, I really don't see the purpose of having a set aside that we incentivize and then allowing them to put their stormwater facilities in the set aside forested area, or the buffers, or the critical areas.
Yeah, right. And they cannot put them in critical areas, they cannot put them in critical area buffers. That's basically, the critical regulations would prevent that. However, I just want to make sure that clear. So it would be, even ponds would not be allowed within the open space created as part of a clustering, as part of the clustering mechanism?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I mean, that's just my opinion. I'm just one council member, but I mean, that, that would be my opinion. It, it just, it gets, because that's where they're all gonna go. If you allow them to go into the forested set aside, that's where your, every stormwater facility possible will be cited.
Okay.
If you wanted to, if you wanted to use the area that is a pond that's somewhere else on the property that's not in the forested area and count that as open space that you set aside in your calculation of the total area set aside, I guess that's maybe permissible if somebody want, if we wanted to try to go to the middle of the road. But the continuous preserved forested area, I would hate to see any stormwater utility, water utility, you know, wastewater utility going through there unless it just absolutely had to.
Okay, so basically, the idea is even ponds would not be allowed within the, the open space that's crafted, created through the space that's crafted, created through the clustering mechanism. I just want to make sure I get this correct.
That's my opinion. Everybody else probably needs to weigh in.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Kind of to the groundwater stuff, or do you want to go, let's go uniformly so everybody can follow.
Let's knock this one off, and then we can go to the next one.
Oh, you want everybody to go down the line?
If you wouldn't mind, I just want to nick them all.
How do you guys feel about stormwater facilities being in the set-aside preserved area of forested area? Councilmember Sandberg?
Well, I just, I brought this up because I wanted to make sure that the applicant could build a stormwater vault elsewhere on the site. And when you read the code language, it prohibits stormwater vaults everywhere. And then, especially in Zone 1, when you're talking about a hillside area, it becomes really difficult for them to construct an open pond-type system or, you know, some kind of depression that meets the definition of a stormwater facility. So I wanted to make sure that, at least I support, if there's a stormwater vault or other facility, that it's available to go anywhere on the site, just not in the critical areas, the buffers, or the area retained specifically as forested open space, which I think is what you're talking about. But still allow the ability, the flexibility to put a stormwater vault elsewhere on the project site. I mean, I know you're a stormwater professional, but, you know, stormwater vaults are easy to maintain, they can have usable space placed on top of them, so, you know, I think that they can be desirable in some situations, and some of these more natural facilities tend to degrade over time and are more difficult to maintain. I just didn't want to, I didn't want to remove that capability and flexibility.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. I am also supportive of vault type stormwater systems in those open spaces, but not ponds. Because if you put a pond there, you're actually deterring from the open space as a usable open space. Am I correct?
So, oh, I'm, so I think I hear what you're saying, you're talking about a vault that you could put some type of a facility on top of?
Correct.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, so examples, projects will put storm vaults in, and they'll have, create open space, grass, open fields, or put playground equipment on top of them. And then that, they have the active use for those open spaces. Versus if you put a pond there, then it becomes a pond, and nobody can ever use it in the future.
Yeah, and that's correct, yes.
So, in that particular case, I am not for putting vaults in buffer areas or sensitive or critical areas. But I am for, supportive of the open space.
Councilmember Agnew?
I agree with Councilmember McNeil.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember McNeil.
Councilmember Spivey?
I would have to agree that if it's open space that would be buildable, you know, if they weren't clustering, then why not? As long as it's not in that critical area or buffer or forest. I'm supportive of Councilmember McNeil's.
I think we have them thoroughly confused, don't we? Or did you get, do you feel like they got it? So, I hate talking about stormwater, it's like the worst thing to...
Yeah, it's, so I think, I think what I heard is that the idea is that an open space that you could use as a, as a usable feature for a vault is okay. And that's kind of what I'm hearing here, but we also have the concern about making sure we apply, you know, the forest equivalency of the most that we can, which is the bioinfiltration and the dispersion.
Can I ask a question?
Shoot.
The language we have before us now prohibits stormwater vaults entirely anywhere in Zone 1. Is that the intent?
Are you asking me? No, you have to build a vault. If you develop that land in Zone 1, you will build a vault.
Right.
What I think he's trying to find out is whether or not we allow that vault to be located in the set-aside area that we're going to keep as open space or forested area.
But Bruce, I think we had this conversation, when you read the language, it prohibits vaults.
It does kind of tend to do that. And I think that that was why, it was important to understand that if the council is okay with vaults in areas that are not curricular areas, curricular buffers, or the set-aside for, we could basically modify that language to allow vaults within those areas, with, not within those areas, but in locations that are not sensitive like that. But I think the nuance here is that, okay, within the set-aside areas in the Zone 1, that we say, look, this is our open space area. What we want to allow there is, if it's okay to allow vaults to be there, provided they have some type of a recreational, you know, aspect, that's okay, that's fine. But I think what Mayor Ream was identifying was it, it's kind of intended to be open space, and it's preferable if it's, you know, a vault, it's got, a vault doesn't necessarily have open space, because you can't really put big trees on anything like that on it. You can put grass and things like that, so. So I think I've got the first part fixed, that we will allow vaults within the sub-area, you know, as long as they're not within one of those, well, the two things, certainly, curricular areas and curricular buffers. And it's just a matter of whether we want to allow vaults within the open space areas we set aside. And that's, that's the question. And I've heard people say that they are comfortable with that.
So just to make sure, is that where everybody's comfortable? Because if, Councilmember, they'll start at the end there. Councilmember Sandberg, are you comfortable with putting the vaults in the set-aside area?
If you have to dig a huge hole for an underground vault, you're not going to be preserving the forest in that set-aside open space. So I think it's fine to build vaults in any place else on the developable area. I think it's fine to count any open space on top of that vault towards any of their open space requirements. I don't think it's logical to say you can build, you can dig and put a big concrete box underground where we're trying to preserve forest areas. Does that make sense?
That's where I'm at.
And that's, and that's the conflict.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the motion to extend would be appropriate.
Already?
I move to extend till 11:30.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember McNeil to extend to 11:30. Any discussion on the motion? Go ahead and cast your vote. Good job, you guys. Passes three to two, Councilmember Spivey, Councilmember Agnew, and the negative, I almost voted no, so that would have been interesting. Where were we?
Oh, the question is whether the vaults are okay within open space areas, within the, within the Zone 1 area.
The set-aside open space area.
The set-aside open space, yeah, you're right. Set-aside open space.
Councilmember McNeil?
So, if the vault is in the open space, they still have to maintain the forestation, correct?
Well, that was, that's the real conundrum here, is that if you allow a vault to be there, there are going to be, there's probably going to be a trade-off between a vault or the forest area. And that's going to be the real issue here that we come up with, we have to determine.
So, I'm sorry, Bruce, let me make sure I'm understanding. So you're saying, from a development standpoint, if through a clustering mechanism, that I create an open space, that that open space may or may not be used as forestation?
Well, the intent of the code is to use it for forestation, to have forested area. The conflict is, if you put a vault in there, as Councilmember Sandberg says, you're going to dig up all that forest, and you're going to basically put a vault underneath the ground in a way that kind of, you know, it kind of takes away from your desire to have forested area.
And when you talk about forested area, you're also talking about infiltration, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so, I still stand by what I said about having vaults in open spaces, because the practice of putting vaults in open spaces, depending on how big the vault is and the need, we have developed, you know, in the past, we have created those vaults in those open spaces and created other amenities. I will also go on to say that if you're going to ask a developer to find a clustering mechanism, and part of that clustering mechanism is reducing the space they have to put a vault, you have to have an accommodation for that. So, again, I stand, I stand by it based on just the principles and the practices that I've seen in the past, and how you cluster and create that open space, put the vault in the open space, thus allowing yourself the room to cluster, so.
Councilmember Agnew?
Put the vaults in the open space.
Deputy Mayor?
So, when I said open space, I wasn't intending that forest would be taken down to put vaults in. I could see if it was a field open space or some grassed area or whatever, but not, not taking down existing forest.
So do you want to put vaults in the set-aside open space?
Yes, if it's not existing forest. Does that make sense?
Then that's a third answer.
Can you make, can you make that a provision? Not all open space is going to be forest, existing forest, correct?
I'm trying to think of how I can put that kind of a nuance into the code and have it, you know, if somebody who's never seen this before. Nobody who's ever seen this before and is picking this up for their senses, oh, I can allow vaults to be within my open space, created as part of the clustering, and it also allows forests, but I'm going to put the vault in there. That's, that's the concern I have.
You have the Surface Water Design Manual, too, to make sure you don't conflict with...
It does, it helps, too, yes, but...
Councilmember Spivey?
I agree with Councilmember McNeil and Councilmember Agnew.
So it comes down to you.
Me?
Yeah, there's two, you're the third one. So it's, it'd be three to three, so what do we do then?
Yes, three to three.
Good luck on the 27th, Bruce.
With, with your permission, I think what I may do is, let me see if I can craft something that gets us to where we want to do. It's going to have the intention, kind of encouraged kind of language, but I think maybe we can come up with something that maybe addresses the concern that if it's a forest, keep it as a forest. If it's a, and we kind of do that, we have the preferences here, okay, you know, intact forest bio retention is the first two, and then you've got to go all the way down to the bottom before you get to the, to the vaults and the other type of facilities. But let me see if I can craft something that kind of addresses the concerns we're hearing here, but also kind of achieves what you're looking for.
So what's the next item?
I'm sorry. And that would be on 207, this is something that Councilmember Sandberg identified. I just want to let you know that the special submittal requirements, there's an inadvertent area that says, within the NCPA, we don't want that to be in there. We want to basically identify that the special submittal provisions apply throughout the entire area. We don't want to exempt the Zone 1 from those regulations.
Can I speak to that briefly?
Sure.
So, on this stapled package that I gave you, and it says on the top, Attachment 3, Exhibit A to Ordinance, which is page 167 of our agenda packet, these are our council findings, and what I underlined and read is, the council finds that the Springstream Basin does have an important role, and therefore, these special regulations include, and then the fourth bullet down is the submittal of the special studies. Okay? But then when you go to the code language, that section, that belongs in Select Section 1252020, and if you look at that header, it says, Special Regulations Applying to 40,000 LID, 9,600 LID, and Zone 1. But then if you, when you read this over and over and over again, little things pop out at you. And so if, so I asked Bruce, was that the intent to remove the require, special submittal requirements for Zone 1? And he said, no.
It's not.
It's not. So we need to strike that clause within the NCPA, because the Zone 1 lands are not in the NCPA. So, is that okay with everybody?
So the proposal is to strike, on page 207 of the packet, under B, within the NCPA, you wanted to strike within the NCPA?
Yes. And staff said they agree with that. Okay.
Okay.
And then on that same page, along with special submittal requirements, we've, we've had this long discussion and controversy about groundwater. Does it exist? How deep is it? How important is it? Do we make it dictate development on the ground like it used to in Ordinance 1988, 98? I forget now. And that's not the point. The point is, is to at least characterize it and let it inform site development to the maximum extent possible. I mean, really, actually, when you look at A through E, they're, when they do those studies, they're already looking at the location of groundwater when they're doing, when they're digging pits, when they're assessing infiltration for their stormwater systems, they're, they're doing that. And so, staff had said, approximate location and depth, I guess, of groundwater on-site. And then the partner language to that is the last page, I believe. Yeah, the last page on 213, which just says, the site design shall consider that information gathered. And it doesn't say, you know, has to, you know, like it used to say in the old language, you know, that all the development and site design needs to conform to contours and no grading. It doesn't say that, it just says, consider the information to the maximum extent feasible. And that's the exact language that we apply to the NCPA, which, when I looked at this section, there was only an A and not the B that says, well, now you have to consider. You have, you know, you don't just do the studies, you have to use that to inform your site design. And so the purpose isn't to say, you know, like, again, it's not that, it's not to say groundwater exists everywhere and it's important and it has to dictate development, it's not to say groundwater doesn't exist at all, it's just to say, let's, let's use this opportunity when they're doing site recon to characterize it, because we certainly could never do that in a best available science study. That was just way beyond the scope and the cost of a study like that. So, I don't think it's a huge add, I think it's what they're already doing. And then we explicitly state where I think we missed it, that you have to consider those. And, you know, staff is, I'm, I welcome their comments on that as well. If they feel like that is, as long as, if you feel that's a showstopper, I'd like to, I'd like to hear the reasons why. But, council, I guess, council has to weigh in.
So I just want to point out, and I thought this was something I did want to bring up tonight, and I don't know if it's something I need to have brought to the meeting when the hearing is open, but I believe we're adopting the 2016 King County Surface Water Design Manual.
That's my understanding as well, yes.
We make sure that we enter into the record the requirements for groundwater evaluation in the site assessment. They say I have the different terminology, I was trying to find it up here, but there should be something in our, because we're going to be requiring the 2016 King County Surface Water Design Manual, and in there, it does have very specific information about what groundwater information you need to collect as part of your site evaluation or your site assessment. I don't know what they call it, drainage report, maybe they call it that.
Well, yeah, they've got a couple of different terminology they use. Do you want to just adopt that here and just say that's what we want to do?
Well, these guys don't have it in front of them, and it's...
I understand.
...over there in the Design Standards for Construction. I just think it needs to be in the record, because when you do, I agree with Councilmember Sandberg, when you look at this, it's like, oh, you guys aren't going to do anything about groundwater. But I think the King County 2016, I think it's Chapter 1 of their design manual, has very specific requirements of what data you need to collect about the groundwater on your site, in addition to critical areas, wetlands, and everything else.
I will put that in the packet, and then, again, with the council's permission, maybe I'll steal some of that language and maybe massage it for your consideration.
Massage it?
Well, it's, it's a long list of things, and, you know, you don't want to have everything in there.
And just from our past experience, please don't put stuff in here that contradicts that... that rather you point to. If council's okay with what it says in the design manual, leave it in the design manual and point to it.
Yeah, I, same thing, yes. Okay.
Councilor Spade?
That was just going to be my point, was if, if we're using the King County Design Manual, then let's just use the King County Design Manual and not try and steal language and put it in here and just complicate the matter, just per King County Design Manual and move on. I, I think that probably takes care of 90 or 100% of what we're trying to talk about here.
And I'm okay with the, adding the B part there. Is that, is that something you're concerned about? It says not only do the studies, but actually use them?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
I should say, yes, that is okay with staff.
All right, yeah. Does any other council member have want to weigh in on the groundwater changes requested by Councilmember Sandberg?
So, it sounds like we're, rather, so we're including B and then adding a reference to the new King County Stormwater Manual? Is that a correct summation of what we're doing here?
So, and the thing that, it's on page 207 of our packet, it says F, approximate location of groundwater on site. That was an add that was requested, and I think it would probably be more appropriate to say something along the lines of whatever groundwater information is collected, is the Surface Water Design Manual requires, which is, should be extensive, if it meets the other manual requirements.
So, I'm, I'm fine with that. Did you want us to weigh in on the highest designation assigned to that's reference to the study?
Oh, hold on, let's wait, make sure.
Oh, we're doing the one thing at a time.
Yeah, we're going this way instead. Councilmember Spade, you went first, we're headed this way. Are you okay with the changes for ground, to address groundwater, Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, I am okay.
Okay. Councilmember Sandberg?
Mm-hmm.
You okay with that change? Okay. So, then we've got one more remaining, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Sandberg, but you want to fix?
Well, could I, could I just speak briefly to the, the three changes that are in front of you, why they are the way they are?
The three changes being on?
It says, and then when you turn the next page, it says page 180, proposed change in blue.
Oh, yeah, we can start on your end and we'll work this way again.
Okay. So, we've had a lot of, of studies, old to new. We've had a lot of discussion about, you know, these statements, like, you know, is it true to say that this area has the highest quality fish and wildlife habitat? Is it true to say it has the highest spawning area? And so, I just wanted to reflect that the latest study, not only does it say, not only does the watershed ICF report say that the North Creek has moderate to high level of ecological function, that is actually the highest designation of any reaches anywhere in the city. They compared them to some Amish river, they did, they did the studies for Swamp Creek. So, there was a staff box that said, oh, it rates five out of six. Well, that's behind like the reaches on the campus, you know, which have 60 acres of restored wetland. But what is, what is a, a factual statement from those, from that report, is that moderate to high is the highest designation, and it's assigned to three of six reaches of North Creek. I am fine with striking the rest of the language assessed in the watershed ICF report, if you don't like that in there, but I think the highest designation assigned to three of six reaches of North Creek is a factual statement. And that's why I added in there. It gives context to what moderate to high really means. So, there's that one. I can go on to the next one, which is pretty easy, because we've talked about groundwater, and it just captures it there. And the last one is this additional caveat of not only do the development activities have to affect groundwater, but they also have to be located in areas with high rates of infiltration. And I feel like if we have that second qualifier, then it makes it pretty easy for the application to ignore the rest of the requirements in that statement. And so, but I, I understand that you want to talk with parametrics about that. And that also promotes the idea that, you know, groundwater, if you're in an area of infiltration, groundwater sits on this impermeable layer, like a layer of plastic, and doesn't infiltrate down. I mean, that's not true, because there are roots, there are seams in those layers that allow for the, the movement of groundwater. So, I, I feel like that clause is, it would prevent triggering any other, those other activities. And that is the end of my changes, and then I have one other comment, and then I'll be done.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. Bruce, do we do, do we have a general geotechnical report stability analysis requirement?
We do, yes. Our critical regulations require that on certain site conditions. And basically, what it is, if you have a gradient of greater than 15%, or if you're in an area with, has a liquefaction, basically a liquefaction zone. It's not 100% all the time, but almost every site has to have that type of a geotechnical analysis done.
And so, in that analysis requirement, that's a city requirement, correct? Development requirement?
Yes, yes.
So, is it possible to defer to that geotechnical requirement and list these? Because I'm noticing, I pulled up one that I just happened to have recently, and it says, as an example, describe the nature and occurrence of groundwater. Provide an opinion on likely seasonal variations in groundwater. So, there, these things are all listed out specifically as to what those requirements will be, I think, to what Councilmember Sandberg is actually asking for.
Well, yes, and in fact, one of the standards of behind a good geotech report is that they really do want to understand what that groundwater influence has, particularly in liquefaction zones. That's, it's all about water.
So, would we be able to pick up some of what this language is?
I want to, I want to review our specific code language regarding geotechnical reports to do that. I can't remember what it is off the top of my head, but it could pick up this. Now, I think that what Councilmember Sandberg is referring to is that this was, this was some language that parametrics recommended we put in, and that's why I'm a little bit hesitant on making a huge change here, but, and I believe what they were talking about, they were talking about the infiltration and the potential water going into the type, the type of groundwater areas that we, aquifers, we don't want it to do. So, I just, I just want to have the experts take a look at this.
Okay, because I know most developers will go to the standard of what the requirement is. They're going to look at that requirement, and they're going to send a report based on that requirement. So, I just want to make sure we're not creating a double edged sword, I guess, is what I'm, where I'm going with that.
What I will do is I will look that up for you and get back with you on that one.
Councilmember McNeil, did you want to weigh in on the other items on this sheet that has page 180 slash proposed changes from Councilmembers Sandberg?
I, I am okay with the changes.
Okay. Of Councilmember McNeil? Sure.
And when I read this, this isn't talking about Zone 1. We, this, that clause does not apply to Zone 1.
Yes, it's intended to apply to the North Creek protection.
Just to the NCPA, yes, okay.
Councilmember Agnew?
I'm good with the changes, as long as the geotech report is instrumental in helping us with the groundwater issue.
So, for the first change that's recommended, Bruce, the highest designation, designation assigned to three of six reaches of North Creek, is that in the city of Bothell, or is that the whole creek system? I don't remember that.
That's an evaluation just within the city of Bothell.
Okay. So, can we strike the other part that gives the reference assessed in the February 2000, and just say in the city of Bothell?
Certainly.
Okay. I would like that. Is that a okay amendment to you, Councilmember Sandberg? Okay. Is that okay with the other two? Okay. We'll get to you guys in just a second. So, there's a few problems with, I'm glad this is pointed out. So, the item number three, it's the page 186, the changes that Councilmember Sandberg's asking to make. There's a couple of other things too. It says, implementing regulations should include provisions requiring all development activities within the Palm and Coalwoods Creek sub-basin. I don't really care what it says after that. Is that one of the shoulds that you were going to change the shall?
I can certainly add it to the list.
Because then it goes on to say, which, which may affect groundwater to flow to the existing topographic contours. Oh, it's to follow. So, groundwater to follow the existing, so groundwater doesn't always follow the contours. Minimize change to, so, I think, I think this one needs some work, Bruce. I'd probably have parametrics look at this. I'm not quite sure what they were getting at.
You mean with the insertion of and, which, a lot of this is existing language. The only, the only change they did was, well, they added the, with the, within the Palm and Coalwoods Creek sub-basins, and then, and which are located in areas with soils with high rate of infiltration. The rest of the language is, has been there for a long time.
Can I add?
So, the, the strikeout, so, yeah, I would agree with striking out with a high rate of infiltration, because what does that mean?
Yeah, what's a high rate, what's a low rate?
Yeah. I'd, so I definitely would strike that part of it. So, I agree with Councilmember to strike there. Yeah, I agree with taking that, that sentence out. It just seems that that should needs to be evaluated, whether it should be should or shall at the beginning of that. Is that enough? Does that help?
Oh, I see it. Okay.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm good with change number one. I do want to thank Councilmember Sandberg for her in-depth reading and interpretations, because it's important. I, I agree that it doesn't quite flow. I don't, it's not, I don't feel like it's grammatically correct, that sentence, so, I'm okay with striking out the high infiltration rate. I just, when I read, "which may affect groundwater," should, there should be a verb somewhere. Groundwater's ability to, I, I don't know. Do you know what I'm saying? Okay, thanks.
Maybe you want to use a word adversely? I don't know.
That's kind of like high infiltration rate. What's adverse?
Better than.
Councilor Spade?
I'm okay with the changes that have been amended. On the first one, the second one, I'm okay with. And then, on P 186, I would support whatever wordsmithing that parametrics comes back with.
So, while Bruce is writing that one down, do we have any other changes to the Fitzgerald Plan and Code Amendments? Yeah, Councilmember Sandberg?
Not a change, just a comment. So, there was a concern expressed to me about, in the clustering provisions that allow the reduction of street standards, there's the potential to cause a significant reduction in parking, presumably, specifically on street parking. So, when you reduce the street widths, you reduce the ability to park on street. And there was a concern that driveways might be modified in a clustering mechanism to be so short as to not allow for parking in the driveway. And when I asked staff at break, they said, no, there are design standards that prohibit that from happening. And I just wanted to say on the record that I'm comfortable with the street reduction standards allowed in clustering, as long as driveways are long enough so that cars can actually park in them, because they're going to need that parking in the driveway. They're going to need off-street parking, because the on-street parking requirements are reduced.
And, I'm sorry, to basically provide a little bit more, there is a minimum stall dimension that we have to comply with. It's going to be a, a stall that's used to beat your parking requirement, and that's 18 feet.
And so, that's still in the code, even if you narrow the, allow narrowing on the road?
Yeah, yeah, because the road is one thing, and then you've got your driveway and your, your parking area, so.
Sounds good. Is there any other changes to the Fitzgerald area? Councilmember Spade? Do you have one? Oh, okay, I guess your light's on there. Tricked me. Okay, so, we don't need to close? Let's see here.
This portion is just a public meeting.
Right.
And so, we're, I believe, going to continue all of the code, the final code amendments to the 27th.
27th.
At which time, we'll have a public hearing for the comp plan amendments for Fitzgerald, and then make a final determination on all of the comp plan amendments for the year.
Okay, so, we're done with this agenda item?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Terrific. Moving on, ordinances, resolutions. We have AB 16-222 Fire Impact Fee Ordinance. And we have Chief Van Horn to provide a staff presentation. Oh, this is, this is a public hearing, or no? Nope. Go ahead, chief.
Okay, thank you, mayor and council.
Excuse me.
Earlier this year, council requested staff.
Chief Van Horn, I'm sorry if I could interrupt. On the previous item, did you guys continue it to the 27th? Was there a motion to continue the public hearing on the comp plan amendments?
I moved to continue the plan and code amendments for the campus Williamson and Fitzgerald amendments to.
December 27th.
December 27th.
Let's move in a second to continue the public hearing on the Uta, Bothell, Cascadia amendments and the Williamson amendments, and we can add this drill just for fun.
Yeah, that's not technically part of the public hearing.
That's okay. And there is a motion by Councilmember Sandberg, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote.
Sorry, thank you, Chief Van Horn.
No problem.
Passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed and Deputy Mayor Duer, absent excused. You have now the floor. Sorry, chief.
Well, again, good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, you're going to receive a fire impact fee rate study. This was prepared by Community Attributes, along with expert advisor Randy Young. And due to the hour, I'm just going to go ahead and say that at the end of the presentation, this is an action item, and we are requesting, staff is requesting that you approve the ordinance, the corresponding ordinance that would enforce this fire impact fee. So, now I will introduce Randy Young.
Thank you, chief. For the record, I'm Randy Young, part of the consultant team helping the city of Bothell develop impact fees. We worked together with you last summer developing a park impact fee, and we spoke to you a month or so ago about the methodology that we're going to use for this fire impact fee. The study that's in your package is much thicker, has a lot more numbers in it than the park impact fee. It appears, therefore, to a first glance reader, to be a lot more complicated. It's actually very simple to explain how the impact fee works, if we could boil this down to thinking about just a fire station and a house, and walk that example through, and then just say, okay, do the same thing for a fire truck and a house, or a fire station and an office building. So, I'm going to give you an example this evening that just focuses on how the logic of this works and how we get to the, to the end numbers. And I'm also going to, we have a slide at the end where we do a. And I'm also gonna, we have a slide at the end where we do a comparison of the rates that we're recommending to you, compared to other cities that you normally compare yourself to. And I'm gonna steal my own thunder and just tell you that we're actually at the bottom of that list, other than cities that have no fire impact fee. The numbers we're recommending this evening, under $200 for a single-family house, for example, are very low for the state of Washington, and yet fully justified. And we're gonna show you why it's justified. But we're also gonna tell you that even at that low number, over the next six years, you would generate, by our estimate, with the development that you're already expecting in Bothell, you would generate over $500,000. So, it would be an important contribution to your capital plan for the Fire Department. So, we're gonna talk very quickly about the rules on fire impact fees. We talked about this at our last meeting a couple of months ago, so I'm gonna zip right through it, knowing the hour is late. But I do want to put it on the record, what the basic rules are. Then we're gonna talk about these calculations using a fire station and a house, for the example. And we're gonna talk to you about two implementation issues. When is the recommended date that this would take place? Just like the park impact fee, we're recommending that even though you act on it tonight, it wouldn't take effect right away. It would take effect in about 90 days. And then we'll take your questions. So, an impact fee is something that is only paid once. It's only paid by new development, so if you already have your house or your office building, or your restaurant, you're not gonna pay it. It's only paid for the city to acquire capital facilities, in this case, fire stations and fire trucks. And it has to be for things that are needed by new development. If you have an existing deficiency, you can't make new folks pay for the old problem. The state laws can be summarized in four ways. First, the fair share rule means that you can charge new growth for its fair share of the cost of the Fire Department, but you can't charge them for any deficiency that exists before you start in on this impact fee. Rule number two, the amount of the fee has to be, as it says in the law, reasonably needed and proportional share. And this means that the amount of the fee has to relate to the amount of impact. And we're going to show you how we measure the impact on your Fire Department, based on the average number of calls that come to the Fire Department from different kinds of properties. So, well, a restaurant's gonna pay more than a warehouse, because restaurants have more kitchen fires, and warehouses don't have kitchen fires. And so, we have data that documents that, and it's in our study. And we'll have a different cost per square foot for a warehouse than we would for a restaurant. That'll comply with rule number two. Rule number three is the credits rule, which simply means you can't charge twice for the same thing. You couldn't charge an impact fee, but also have a bond issue for a new fire station, and charge a fire impact fee for that new fire station. So, if you adopt the fire impact fee, that's gonna pay growth share. If you needed to pay for a new fire station and needed a bond issue for part of it, the fire impact fee can pay for the growth share, and the bond issue could be used to pay for the existing population share. Or, you could have everybody pay the bond issue and repeal the fire impact fee, but you can't plunge ahead and knowingly charge new development twice. You can't charge them for the bond, and charge them for the fire impact fee. You don't have that bond now, so our calculation is for the full amount of their proportionate share. Except for rule number four. Only in our lovely state of Washington do we have a rule that says, "Growth can pay for growth, except growth can't pay for all of growth." The phrasing in the state law is, "You cannot rely solely on impact fees." It means, our job as technicians, as the financial analysts, is to calculate what the 100% number is, and then to remind you that you cannot charge 100%, and to recommend to you a number lower than that. We're doing the same thing we did with the park impact fee, we're recommending 97%. And that will help us include some other funding, although it won't be major funding like a bond issue. So, let's look at how we do this calculation, and let's keep it focused on, first, what does it cost when somebody calls the Fire Department? That's an incident. There are different kinds of incidents. There are fire incidents, there are medical incidents, there are other emergency incidents. But when a call is made, part of the support for that call is the fire truck on the capital side, but part of it is the fire station. So, we're gonna look at a cost per incident for a fire station. Then we're gonna look at how many incidents warehouses cause versus restaurants versus houses. We're gonna use a house as our example. Then we're gonna take the cost per incident, and the cost of the incident rate, and come up with a fee that is charged for the station. We're gonna repeat that process for all the different types of apparatus. We're gonna repeat all of that for other kinds of calls. And at the end, we're gonna make the 3% reduction to not rely solely on impact fees. Here are excerpts from our study that show you what those numbers look like. These are parts of larger tables. At the top is station number 42. It's 10,000 square feet. And in the year 2015, your Fire Department responded from that fire station 2,715 times. So, if you divide the 10,000 square feet by the 2,715 incidents, we were using up an average of 3.68, call it four square feet of fire station per incident. Okay? So, each, the average incident needed that much square footage. Now, every incident actually was supported by the whole 10,000 square feet, but since there were 2,700 incidents, we're charging each of them, remember that rule about proportionate share? Their proportionate share is just the four square feet. Formula number two, fire station costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars. On a per-square-foot basis, that station costs $202.17 a square foot. That's the land and the building. And it's gonna last a lot longer than one year, where the data we used in the first formula is 2,700 incidents for one year. That $202 a square foot's gonna last you for 50 years. So, we divide the $200 by 50 years, and it means that a fire station costs $4 per square foot per year, which allows us, in our last formula on this slide, to take the first two formulas and put them together. So, take the $4 a square foot from the middle formula, take the 3.68 square feet from the first formula, and multiply them times each other. And the answer is, if you call Bothell Fire Department with a fire incident that's responded to, you're gonna use up $14.89 worth of fire station. So, when we charge an impact fee, part of that impact fee is $14.89 towards the fire station. Now, we're not required to put it in a special account just for the fire station, but we're earning it, because you used up that much fire station. And a new person is gonna use up that much fire station every time they come to us. We're gonna then take that number and ask ourselves, well, if development calls us for a fire call, how much do they use up? Do they use up the $14? Is one incident $14 worth? And the answer is, we analyze each type of land used separately. So, your dispatch records are excellent. And we learned, in the year 2015, that there were 52 fire emergencies at residential properties in Bothell responded to by Bothell. So, we left out when your firefighters go out of town and help somebody else on a mutual aid call. We left out the other departments coming into town, because we can't spend the impact fees on their equipment. We just looked at the 52 calls to houses and apartments and condos that happened in that year, in 2015, in Bothell. And in that year, there were 17,877 residential units. Some houses, some condos, some apartments. So, we did some math. And you get this number with lots of decimals in it. What that means is that's, let's call it 003, just to do some rounding. That would be 3/10ths of 1%. So, not even 1 whole percent, 3/10ths of 1%. Of what? What is that 3/10ths of? It means that 3/10ths of 1% of all the residential units in Bothell actually had a fire during the year 2015. So, wouldn't it be nice to know which house is gonna have a fire? We'd charge them the impact fee for the whole fire, and everybody else would get off free. But we don't know that. So, we use the same statistic a different way. What we say is, every house, and every apartment, and every condo in the city of Bothell, has a chance, 3/10ths of 1% chance of having a fire in one year. And so, we need them to pay an impact fee. A new house needs to pay us an impact fee for 3/10ths of 1% of one fire call for a new dwelling unit. And that's what the bottom table does. It takes that decimal 0029243, that's the 3/10ths of a percent, multiplies it times our $14.89, and now we know, hey, new house, new apartment, new condo, you need to pay us 4 cents per house for one year worth of fire protection calls. That'd be a real cheap impact fee. And when I said it was less than $200, that's a lot more than 4 cents. So, how do we get from 4 cents to $200? It's the other pieces of the puzzle. First is, this is one year's worth, okay? So, that 4 cents needs to be paid 50 times, because the fire station lasts for 50 years. The house lasts for 50 years. We're using national guidelines on the longevity and the useful life of real estate. And so, 50 times 4 cents, it's now $2.17. That's still a lot less than $200. So, what have I got here? I've got a new house, or a new condo, paying $2.17 for the fire station, but we haven't talked about the fire trucks. And they're paying for a fire station for fire emergencies, but we haven't talked about medical emergencies. So, that's where the rest of this is gonna go. If you have followed what we've done here, you've got it. This is the fundamental system we use, over and over, for the other combinations. So, for instance, the bottom row of this table, other than the total, the one that says "Fire Station, Step 6 Above, $2.17," that was the five tables we went through. Imagine seeing the same five tables for an aid vehicle, or what we all call an ambulance. And then, that would lead you to 10 cents for the life of the ambulance. There's the battalion chief's vehicle. We need 23 cents for the life of that vehicle. A fire engine, very expensive, $2.15. A ladder truck, $1.35. You add 'em all up, and now, we need that new house, new apartment, new condo, to pay us not $2.17, but actually to pay us $6.02 for not only the fire station, but for all the different apparatus that we use to respond to fire emergencies. Okay, I'm now at $6, but I said we were gonna be going to almost 200. Where does the rest of it come? Well, this is for fire emergencies, but there are all the other kinds of calls. And as I'm sure you know from being on council, the most frequent call isn't fires anymore, it's the medical. So, when we do this same process for all the different apparatus and the stations, the fire at the top, the $6 one, is the bargain. It's the least expensive. Quite predictably, the most expensive, because we get lots more calls, and we have to roll a lot of equipment, is $129 towards our medical emergencies. And then, $52.99 for other emergencies, you know, and then the non-emergencies calls are about $14. So, adding those all together, that gets us to $202. And I said we were gonna be a little under $200. Remember the not 100% rule? The 202 is the 100%. So, using the same 3% reduction that we did for the park impact fee, the so-called credit adjustment, that $6.09 is 3% of the 202. Subtract the 3%, and the recommended, defensible, doesn't charge 100% fire impact fee for the city of Bothell for a residential property, is $196.86. Here's what this looks like for all the other land uses. So, it ranges from a low of a warehouse, 2 cents a square foot, because warehouses don't have very many fires, they have almost no medical emergencies, there's not much going on there. The high one is restaurants, $3.49. They have kitchen fires, they have guests who, you know, have indigestion or worse, and call for medical help. The staff in the kitchen gets injured and needs medical help. That's where the bulk of the calls are going, and so, they have the highest cost per square foot. These rates, when compared to other communities, these are the cities that we compared for the park impact fee, and you'll notice that most of them have zeros. Park impact fees are charged by almost every city. Fire impact fees are only charged by about 20% of the cities. And I don't have a simple answer as to why that is. Some have bond issues, don't need it. Some have chosen not to charge impact fees for anything, don't need it. Others have other funding strategies for their fire equipment. As you can see, Bothell's fee, this is for residential properties, is $196 per dwelling unit, and we're the second lowest of the cities that you compare yourself to. Redmond's just a little lower than that. By the way, on that chart, SFDU is a single-family dwelling unit. Some of these cities have an additional different rate for a multifamily dwelling unit. Our data only allowed us to do the calculation for all dwelling units the same as each other, so we don't make that distinction. We're not able to do it with the data from your dispatch records. Comparing the non-residential rates, we were looking at the 2 cents to $3.59, $3.49. Even at $3.49, we're not the highest. Issaquah has a land use that's over $11.5 per square foot. And Redmond has a rate that equals our lowest, at 2 cents a square foot. It's kind of all over the place, but we're definitely in the marketplace, if you will. We're competitive. As I said in my opening remarks, we took these recommended rates and applied them to your own forecast, the city's own forecast of how much new housing, how much new commercial development, and we did a fairly detailed analysis. And we believe that in the next six years of your next capital facilities plan, you would generate over $500,000 from these rates. That'd be an important addition to the capital budget for the Fire Department, in order to do whatever it needs to do next, whether it's working towards a new station, or whether it's adding living quarters to Station 42, because of the increased use of the ladder truck. You know, we don't need to solve that problem. That's between you and the chief, as to what your priorities are, and you will work that out in your next capital facilities plan, because you can't spend this money until you put some project like that into the capital facilities plan. Let me end with the implementation comments, just two of them. We recommend, as we did with the park impact fee, that you adopt this, so everybody knows this official, it's coming, it's not a rumor, we're not gonna change our minds, but adopt it effective several months from now. As we told you at the time of the park impact fee, there are applicants walking in tomorrow, or a week from Tuesday, or yesterday, who've already got a signed contract with somebody who wants to buy their property, and they didn't know about these fees. And yet, these fees are due when the building permit is issued, so it really isn't fair to hit them with that surprise. And as you did with the park impact fee, you agreed with us approximately three months. So, we're recommending, let's get through all of January and February, the rest of December, round it off to the 1st of March. So, that's what's in the draft ordinance, is that this would be in effect on the 1st of March. The other thing to know about implementation for fire impact fees is there are exemptions, and there's a special one that didn't apply to parks, because it's unique to fire. And you actually have this exemption in place already, you have this program in place already in Bothell. If an applicant comes to you and says, "I'm gonna build this little subdivision, but it's in this kind of tight property area, and your fire trucks can't really make it around the corner." Actually, they won't say that. Your Fire Department will be looking at the plans going, "Our trucks can't make it around that corner, and so, we can't safely protect that property." So, rather than telling them, "No, they can't build," Bothell allows them an alternative, and that's to put a sprinkler system into a single-family residential house, in return for which, we can get close to you, but your sprinkler system will protect your house until we can get that close to you. And so, if you make those sprinkler improvements, then Bothell allows you to go forward. Well, there's a state law under impact fees that says, if you charge an impact fee, the fire portion of the fee, that's $6 out of the 200, that's exempted if they put in a sprinkler system. And that will be part of the law, that you're required to have. The other exemptions will be just like your exemptions for transportation and park impact fees. And on that note, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Deputy Mayor?
So, this might be a question more for staff, but when you said the fees were due at permitting, I thought that state law now required they're due later, like certificate of occupancy. Didn't we just vote on that at some point this year?
Yeah, well, a new legislation has passed, and we've adopted it in Bothell to defer for residential, the payment of the impact fee to final inspection.
Oh, final inspection, okay.
And in order to do that, they have to put a lien on the property and sign a form, and obligate themselves to pay at the time of final inspection.
So, given that, would you still recommend March 1st?
Yes.
Okay. I'm thrilled, because I've wanted to look into fire impact fees since the beginning of the year. So, I'm fully in support of it. I appreciate, I always appreciate your studies and your presentations.
Thank you.
I always feel like I learned something, so thank you.
I'd like to go next. Councilmember Spivey?
Thank you. First, I have a question for staff. Would these impact fee dollars be part of the Fire Department budget? Or would they go into a capital budget that doesn't affect their annual, biannual budget? Or would they go into a capital budget that doesn't affect their annual, biannual budget?
Has to be spent on capital, but it would be fire-related.
Be fire-related, but not part of their biannual budget?
Correct.
Okay.
If it helps, that's, you have the same rule in place already for your transportation impact fee and your park impact fee. State law required you to establish a separate account for those. That's a capital account only, and it can't go to those operating departments either.
Okay. And then slide nine, I believe it was. You show the different apparatus and the cost per apparatus.
Yes.
See, we'll get there.
Good memory, yes.
So you have a ladder truck at a dollar thirty-five and an engine at two fifteen.
Yes.
Are you having a shorter lifespan on the ladder truck? Is that why it's cheaper?
No, it goes to fewer calls. This is actually, these numbers have, remember that rule about proportionate share? We plug it in at every step of the calculations, and we only charge for the number of times the ladder truck goes to a fire, which is way fewer times than engines go.
Okay. I just want to make sure because I know that they're twice or sometimes approaching three times the price, the cost of an engine, so. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Spivey.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I always love your presentations. They're so informative. And I want to point everybody to nine-thirty timestamp and watch this because it's really important to understand what these impact fees are. I remember when we were talking about the park impact fee, we were talking about we left money on the table because we didn't identify certain projects in the capital facility plan. I'm trying to remember that argument, and are we doing the same in this instance?
No, we're using a slightly different approach to the capital facilities plan here. In in the case of the park impact fee, you had adopted a capital facilities plan before we began our calculations. And so we had to live with what you had adopted. You were allowed and are allowed to amend it after we were done, and subsequently you could revise the park impact fee, but we had to live with what was there. And it didn't have as many projects as our recommended investment per person said you could have had. And so that was the money that was left on the table. We're allowed to develop an impact fee when there is no capital facilities plan at all for a particular agency. And in this case, your capital facilities plan does not include any improvements for fire stations nor any improvements for apparatus. You have apparatus replacement through a very well-managed asset replacement system. You're one of the better cities in doing that, but that's not part of impact fees. But in terms of new apparatus that are not replacements and new fire stations, you don't have the capital facilities plan. What we're allowed to do is to develop this cost, have you adopt it, start putting it in that bank account. You're allowed under state law to keep the money for up to ten years, and then you do have to refund it. But certainly, in way less than ten years, the fire department and finance and the city manager are going to come together and come to you and say, we need a new station, or we need an addition to this station, or we needed additional ambulance, not a replacement ambulance, and whatever that is then becomes eligible for this expense. So we're not leaving money on the table. But excellent memory of how that did go, and this is different because of that.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm fully supportive of this. I also have been waiting for this. I think this is, you know, we went through the process of the study and showed the basis for the for the request. And I think it's important, you know, we're going to be discussing in our February retreat, refund, you know, replenishing the the fund for asset replacement, and this is one of those mechanisms to do so. And so I I fully support any motion that comes forward.
Councilmember Agnew.
Well, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Have you heard that enough? I too support this. We can use these impact fees for facilities and for equipment, right?
Correct.
Okay. So hypothetically, let's say that we get five hundred thousand dollars over the next six years. That affords us to buy a fire engine or part of a fire truck.
Yes.
And then we can still go out for a bond for the station if we want to build a station.
Correct.
Okay. You have my full support?
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Didn't want to leave that out. I did have a question on the sprinkler. The six cents, I think it was?
Six dollars.
Six dollars. So the rest of that impact fee would still be charged if somebody puts a sprinkler system in their home?
Correct, because the rest of it is for, like, the big piece is a medical emergency, and a sprinkler doesn't help you with a medical emergency.
Fabulous. Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that, and I am very supportive. And thank you so much for this wonderful presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So I'm the last one to talk, and thank you for your presentation.
My pleasure.
So we heard earlier tonight from a lot of people along Main Street that they're struggling with paying the traffic impact fee. And this question probably goes more to staff. Is this just adding salt to the wound then? Because they would have a fire impact fee in addition to the transportation impact fee? Or is it only for new development? Is it, will this apply to a change of use? Like, where has been identified by the downtown, or I'm sorry, the Main Street property or businesses that it's hindering their ability to re-lease out their spaces?
Well, it's it's applicable to all land uses, the same as our transportation and our park fee. It's it's not, in terms of residential, it's not great. And comparatively, it's not that great for non-residential as well. We did have a meeting with the Development Services Stakeholders Group. They didn't seem to have major concerns. They did say they, you know, they would like to have some time to get the plans through through for permitting before it takes effect. But they they didn't have any question about the calculation of the fee and how it was determined and derived.
So this, will this apply to the example that we were given? Say, the Bothell Furniture, they move out of there and some other, you know, restaurant goes in. This impact fee would be assessed on to that new business?
Yes, it does. Yeah. At change of use, it would be applicable. And the, you know, if it is a restaurant, they do get a credit for, well, I guess in this case, now I need to think about this a little bit.
May I?
Go ahead, Randy.
Sure. I've I've put back up on the screen the rates, all the rates that we're recommending. And in this specific instance that you're discussing, I'm not familiar with it, but I hear the the basics, going from a furniture store to a restaurant. So let's assume a furniture store was in the retail category on this list. So if it was vacant land and they were building a furniture store for the first time, they'd pay thirty-six cents a square foot. If it was vacant land and they were building a restaurant, they'd pay three dollars and forty-nine cents a square foot. In the case of a replacement, whether it's fire damaged or whatever else, if it was retail, they would get a credit for thirty-six cents a square foot subtracted from the three forty-nine. That's my understanding of the procedure that the city contemplates or uses.
That's where I was going, yes.
So I never trust my math at ten o'clock at night, but when I look at, let's say it's just a new restaurant space that's going into the Bothell Furniture, it would be somewhere around thirty-one thousand dollars.
Is it a ten thousand square foot space?
Yeah.
Okay, that's actually fairly large for a restaurant, but sure.
Maybe they'll split it into two restaurants, but it's going to not be a furniture store when they're done converting it, so.
But if it is ten thousand square feet, it probably is costing a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to build. So we're probably talking, you know, a very expensive facility of which thirty thousand dollars, you and I wouldn't like to write a check out for thirty thousand dollars out of our personal bank accounts. It's a lot of money. But if you're setting up a business and having to get the whole building and all the kitchen equipment, if you would have the choice to not pay this, of course you'd choose not to pay it. But if the city needs that because restaurants call the fire department all the time, and this is your pro-rata share, and it's less than one percent of the cost of the whole development, the city's got to make a policy choice whether to let that, those folks not pay or. The one thing I would have to advise, you know, talk to your city attorney about exemptions because you can't pick and choose. You can't say, well, we're going to charge restaurants less because that's the highest rate. My understanding of how Washington's law on impact fees works is your policy prerogative is to not charge a hundred percent. But if you reduce any one rate by ten percent or twenty percent or thirty percent in order to maintain the proportionate share rule, you need to reduce all of them by that same amount. So your five hundred thousand dollars that you'd be getting over the next six years would go down by that, whatever percentage you had in mind.
Okay. I think that was the only kind of question and comment that I had. So is there anybody in the public? Pat, you got anything you want to add? All right.
Thank you.
Great presentation from the public. We've already done council questions, so is there a motion to consider the recommended action? The recommended action is to approve the proposed ordinance establishing a city of Bothell fire impact fee.
So moved.
Moved the second.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Spivey.
I'd like to make a many motion. And that would be to make this effective April first. We're going into the holiday season. Offices are going to be closed. And as I remember last time, we kind of looked at a full three months. And even though we're halfway through the month, again, we have a couple sets of holidays coming up. So I would propose that my amendment make it that it takes effect April first rather than March first.
I'll take your motion. Any discussion on the many motion? Seeing them, place your vote. The many motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent. So we're back to the underlying motion, which is to approve the proposed ordinance establishing the city of Bothell fire impact fee. Is there any discussion on the motion? So I just want to say something. So I'm really concerned about this just because we are just going to go and look at our transportation impact fees based on the feedback we're getting from the public on Main Street. I have some concern about rolling this into that conversation at this point, but I'm conflicted because I think April, maybe that'll give us enough time to try to iron that out. But at the same time, I would assume that those same people are going to be just equally as frustrated with this impact fee as they are with the transfer. Granted, it's less money per square foot, but it's going to impact them. So I just want to put that in there before we take the vote. Councilmember Agnew.
I too am a little concerned, but I'm not that, it's not going to sway my vote. When we looked in the RFA, the RFA study that came back said that our equipment and our stations needed help. And this is one way that we can help improve our facilities and help improve our equipment. And I think it's it's something we need to do.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion? It's in, oh, Councilmember Spivey.
Great, thank you. Thank you again, Randy. It was great. I agree with Councilmember Agnew. It's not going to change my vote. I think there's things we can do, like we're looking into the transportation impact fee. But the people on Main Street, as well as anybody that's ever had a fire, understands the needs for keeping up our fire equipment and and our facilities so that our people are sharp when they respond to incidents. And I think that of all things, you know, fire is always asked to do more with less. And this enables us to use dollars that would normally go to asset replacement or something, put those back into training and other types of equipment. And this, you know, this is capital that can go to apparatus and in the station. So I think it's a way to fund other other needs in the fire department, not just capital because we're not putting other stuff into capital, so.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Okay, go ahead and place your vote, which would be to approve with the effective date April Fool's Day, 2017. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. We're on to AB sixteen dash two-two-three, which is school impact fees, and is this a public hearing? Nope. Okay, so staff presentation by, who's coming here? Karen? Oh, look at that. Mr. Burdette.
Mayor and council, I'm going to I'm going to cover this for for the council tonight. There may have been a miscommunication between me and the school district, but I'll make it brief. presentation on school impact fees was was made by the staff of the school district on November fifteenth. And at that, at that meeting, they went over some some questions. The district has approved a capital facilities plan that does include an impact fee. This impact fee only covers residential and only single-family residential. So it doesn't cover any other land use, doesn't cover multifamily, doesn't cover non-residential, only single-family. The last time that the city had an
Could you clarify, when you said it only covers single-family, we're talking new construction, not existing?
Right, only new construction of single-family, absolutely. The last time the city had an impact fee was in the year 2000, and that impact fee was three thousand four hundred and eighty-five per single-family, new single-family unit and zero for multifamily. From 2002 to 2016, the, a school impact fee was not assessed because the school district didn't reflect growing enrollment that could justify a fee. September, the school board adopted new capital facility plan impact fee, and they've asked all of the local jurisdictions within the district to adopt that fee. So I've covered that. I'll kind of bring back, come back to the central question that we had in November fifteenth was how do we, how does Bothell compare with impact fees to surrounding cities and other and other cities? And we, thanks to the hard work of the Public Works Department, who have been collecting information on impact fees, we do have a table that is very inclusive impact fees altogether, transportation, school, park, fire, water, sewer, storm. And it compares the cities of Sumamish, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, Kenmore, Woodinville, and unincorporated Snoomish County, Lynnwood, and Bellevue. The the result of that information looks like this on a bar chart where we've also put in for the cities within the within the North Shore School District, what it would look like with adoption of the full impact fee for Bothell or a phased impact fee with, and the full impact fee is ten thousand five hundred or with a phased implementation of impact fee of seven thousand dollars per new single-family unit. And as you can see across across the graph, we've also identified for the other cities within the school district, whether there would be a full impact fee or no impact fee adoption for Kenmore and Woodinville. So you can kind of compare this bar chart with with other cities. Of course, Sumamish is right at the top. Issaquah and Redmond are already fairly close, are already over thirty thousand in all impact fees. And the color coding identifies the different impact fees for those different facilities with the school one, school impact fee being right at the top of of the bar chart. with the school one, school impact fee being right at the top of the bar chart. So I hope that this is the information council was looking to see, so you could see how Bothell would compare if we should adopt a school impact fee.
Tom, let me jump in if I can. This is not so much about just the school impact fee, which is shown in the orange for those folks at home kind of looking at the chart and can't read the small parts. But if you actually look at that, actually, the lowest one there, the one bar chart that shows where Bothell is or was as of the start of 2016, and then next to it, just to the left, is, if you look at the blue and the gray and the green, those are the Bothell impact fees as they stand following the revisions that you've updated here this year that would be in effect as of 2017. And you can see that we're currently, just the city-only fees, we're in that lower third of the group. And even with the school impact fee, we're going to, if it were at the 7,000, which is shown there, or just a little higher at 10,000, we'd be, you know, in that, with the two-thirds group. So Bothell's impact fees are not out of line with that of surrounding jurisdictions. There are some, about a third, that are lower, but there are about a third that are higher. So we're pretty much in the ballpark. That was the market comment I wanted to make.
Good, yeah, good observation. The staff has put together two options. Well, before I go into the options, I probably ought to cover one other area. We did ask Randy Young to do an analysis. He gave us two-pageable questions. I vetted those questions with the school district. They addressed all of those questions to my satisfaction, one by one. And the school districts use a template and a formula for calculating impact fees, so all school districts use the same template and the same kind of methodology. So they don't hire separate consultants typically. Typically, school districts use the same template and plug in their data and use that formula to calculate their impact fee. So we've, I've prepared two options for the council to consider, primarily because Snohomish County in November adopted a phased impact fee of 7,000 for 2017, and coming up to the full impact fee of 10,560, I think it's actually 63, by 2018. And that is what Snohomish County has adopted. The other cities within the district, Kenmore and Woodinville, have not yet adopted the impact fee. So we're not sure what they're going to do yet. And then we brought in option two, which is the full fee adoption of 10,563, starting in 2017. I'm going to pass out, there's a couple of corrections that we made to the ordinances that are in your packet through the city attorney's office, so I'll pass those out.
While Tom's doing that, I'll just kind of, we did meet with the Development Services Advisory Group that's been working with us on this. And while they recognize that these increases, after some years of having no impact fees, that these increases, you know, are larger, they also were very recognizing of the value of a good, strong school district to the development community. So at one point, they, you know, they don't like the fee per se, but they recognize the value that it brings back to their project. And I do think you have a letter in your packet from them asking for the phased option based on that recognition. They would prefer the 7,000 cap, so that it would be consistent in Snohomish County Bothell, as well as King County Bothell, with the other Snohomish County areas of the school district. So their request and staff would recommend the phased option, unless you feel it's appropriate to just go to the full option at this point.
So exactly, the phased option one is recommended is 7,000 for 2017, 10,563 would start in 2018. And option two is 10,563, starting immediately in 2017. We've also put in both ordinances, the effective date being January 23rd of 2017, and that would allow for 30 days for the existing developments that are currently in the system to work through permits. And single-family houses go rather quickly through permitting. So we think that's an adequate amount of time. So with that, we'll answer any questions council might have.
Councilmember Agnew?
Why was there no impact on multifamily dwellings?
The calculation came out to have a de minimis amount on multifamily because there are just not a high number of children that are generated by multifamily housing.
So can I help you answer that, because I asked the superintendent last night? They look at the stock that has been built of multifamily in the last five years, and what they found was a lot of children don't live in the newer stock. I mean, anybody that follows a school bus around, when they stop at an older apartment complex, I mean, they're there for about five minutes because there's so many kids coming out of the complex, but that's not what they look at. They only can look at the last five years, and those units are so expensive. I think people that have families typically aren't going to move into those units. That's what she's told me.
Yeah, that's right. Spot on.
Did you have any other question? Okay. Deputy Mayor?
So I had a question. How many, approximately how many new residences, houses are built in Bothell per year lately?
About 200, yeah, about 200.
About 200? So if I do the math, and I do 200 times 3,500, wait, it's, yeah, 3,500 is what the discount is. That's $700,000 that we're...
That's correct.
Not giving the school, not allowing the school district to collect.
For 2017.
For 2017.
Roughly, that would be correct.
So when I look at page 462 of the packet, and I see that Frank Love is 44% in portables, that causes me concern because I just ran for council last September, or last November, and all I heard all summer long doorbelling was, "The schools, the schools, the schools, the schools." So I understand the phasing, and I support phasing. I guess I'm just wondering if that's the right number or the right amount of time, because $700,000 is a lot of money that could go towards that school capital facilities plan. So I'm really torn. I'm not sure. I'd like to hear what other people have to say.
Who would like to go next? Anybody? Councilmember Sandberg?
I think that that's a really important point that you bring up, Deputy Mayor, but we, the school district has existed with no money up until this point. And so the flip side of that coin is they're getting 7,000 times 200, which they're getting 1.4 million, whereas before, they, the school district would be collecting zero. And so, you know, I can understand the argument of being consistent with Snohomish County and their phased approach, and reflective of the planning that goes into the, you know, the whole development of single-family homes and the time required to do that, and the desire for predictability. So I guess I'm going to support the phased approach. Because I think it's better to start collecting 1.4 million now than thinking about, I mean, it's the glass half-full argument.
Who'd like to go next? It's not getting any earlier. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. I'm actually going to support doing it now. I don't think to $3,563 on a single-family home, that $600,000 in our community, on average, is going to be that big of a dent for the development community. You showed us an example of the other cities surrounding us. They're charging it. It's not hurting development within those cities. They're stronger than ever. I feel that we've waited far too long to ensure that we're taking care of the youth in our community, in our schools in our community. So this is, to me, this is a very small amount of money on a grand scale of things that's going to help out over the long run. So I'm, as far as I'm concerned, I think that we need to do it now. I think the phased approach and matching up with Snohomish County, I don't quite understand why we would need to do that as a city. I'm a little concerned that we don't know what Woodinville and Kenmore are also doing. I think that's a big concern that we need to be looking at. But for the kids in the North Shore School District that live within Bothell, and I must tell you, my kids live in Bothell, but they go to school in Kenmore, but they're still part of the same school district, I think this has a profound impact on the, what they go through on a daily basis. So anything we can do to support them, just like we're doing with the fire, I think is very, very important.
Thank you. I'm going to go with the first option, the phased. I appreciate Councilmember McNeil's comments, and I understand exactly where he's coming from, but there's also the, it, there is an affordability standpoint in this, and we've talked earlier about affordable housing, and I'm really disappointed that this just isn't all housing units, including condominiums and multifamily, because those families do move into there eventually, or at some point. And I think it's just only equitable across the board. And after hearing the reason why, I was fully prepared to vote no, because multifamily wasn't included. But after hearing the feedback on the newer units aren't supporting families so much, I think my compromise is to go with the phased approach. So that's what I'll be supporting.
So I've been grappling with this all day. I do understand the position, at least the Master Builders Association, that they put in writing to us, that they, you know, they plan out a project many years in advance and tacking on, you know, $10,000 per house, kind of way down the game from when they bought the property from the people that they bought it from to develop. To have that tacked on per unit is a pretty big blow to them. It could, it easily cuts their profit margins, is what they basically explained. But at the same time, I also see the portables, I've heard, I went and knocked on the doors the same time that the deputy mayor did, and I heard the same feedback that, you know, somebody needs to do something about the schools. So I'm still, yeah, just like the last one, I'm pretty torn about what to do with this. But it's time to vote. So is there a motion on, do we need to have a public comment? Do we publicize this as a public comment?
I believe it is.
No? Nobody in the public is interested in providing comment, so.
Mayor, I'd move that we adopt option one.
So that'd be, option one would be ordinance, I've got ordinance A or ordinance B here, so option one is...
The phased option.
Okay, so that would be, you want to approve ordinance, you move to approve ordinance B then, right? They're kind of backwards, because option one isn't ordinance A.
Second.
Is that right? You want the phased approach?
The phased approach, yes. I think I've already spoken in my motion.
Yep, it's moved in second, and moved by Councilmember Spivey, seconded by Councilmember Sandberg to approve ordinance B, which is the phased approach to the school impact fees. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember McNeil?
I will be supporting the motion, because I feel that we need to at least have an impact fee. I'm a little disheartened that we're not going to be doing it in 2017 and lose the potential for $700,000, but I think it's more important that we get the process started and start collecting the fees. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
I just want to make a point of order. A council member could vote against this motion, and if the motion fails, they can propose another motion. So it's not like if this one fails, we're not collecting an impact fee at all. Is that correct?
If you vote on the other one, then yes, there would be an impact fee collected. If you don't vote on either, then you're not adopting the ordinance that would impose the fee.
So just in terms of process, this motion could fail, and then a council member could propose another motion.
Correct.
And get seconded, so.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, just so we know about their options.
Deputy Mayor?
Can I make an amending motion to have the phasing? I just want to make sure, I think it's, I couldn't find it in here. I'd like the $7,000 fee to end December 31st of 2017. I want to make sure that that, so that fresh in the new year, it's the full amount.
So ordinance B is, it does change on the end of, in 2018, it becomes the full amount, $10,563.
I withdraw my amending motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. Wow, passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. So what do we have left on our agenda? We have an executive session for 30 minutes. So the executive session is pursuant to RCW 4230-1101G, labor negotiations, and RCW 4230-1101B, property acquisition. Before we go...
We can, on the exec session materials, we can table the labor relations portion to January 10th. The only one that Peter needs some time with council on is on the property.
Okay. Are we going to come back out and do city manager reports, or did you want us to have a few last words before we go to exec?
I could be very quick, and then we could just get out of exec and go home. I actually sent copies of my concluding remarks to council as a group, and I'll give, I think I gave the clerk a copy as well, so it's in the record. But basically, I think the highlights of what I wanted to say was, you know, with the roadmap and the game plan, looking forward, I think the city's got pretty clear focus now. And when I met with Jennifer, she was really excited to get with you all in the retreat and flesh that out, and make sure that she fully understands where that is. And then we have the four special studies that are going on to answer questions that we, were questions we raised, but didn't have answers to relating to where we're going with police services, fire services, finishing up some of the court study questions we had, and then the parks rec, open space. So I think those four studies are going to be real important to the city, and get those done in the first half of 2017. And other than that, I've really just thoroughly enjoyed my opportunity to work with the community, with the council, to get to know the staff. And, you know, it's just, it's kind of nice. I mentioned before, my nieces went to Bothell High, and I've been in and out of this community for a long time over the course of my career, but to really be on the inside, looking out and working with you all, it's just been a pleasure. And I think it's going to be a great five to 10 years for Bothell. I just think, I think you guys are at a sweet spot. I think the community really showed that it is willing to support when it's reasonable. Those things needed to keep this community... those things needed to keep this community moving ahead. So I'm just delighted to have been a part of that, and I want to thank you all for the great work you did. Council was, you worked pretty hard, too, so I think everybody was in there pitching on this thing, but it's been a good six months, and I think you're going to have a great 2017 and beyond. So with that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So I just want to add a couple of comments. When we interviewed for the interim city manager, Bob Jean sat down and said, well, he turned the interview around, basically, and started interviewing us, and asked, "Are you guys ready to do some work here? Because I'm not going to just keep a seat warm." And, you know, you definitely did that, and I want to thank you for what you did for us. There was a lot of things that we have changed over the, your stay here as the interim city manager. One of the, a couple of the things that I wanted to highlight, when we now meet about the agenda before our meetings with the city manager's office, which I think is a huge improvement from where we were, I feel like we have a lot more influence and direction and involvement in the budgeting process. The last thing, I think, too, that really, for me, was a big deal, and that's your care and interest in municipal government, and how important it is to the people that we represent, and how that you hold that very dearly, and you reminded me why I do what I do, that it's important that we're here to serve the public and do what we can with the resources that we have, and redeploying resources. I don't know how many times I've said that now, since you've been saying it to me, but, you know, trying to do what we can with what we have before going and asking for more revenues to provide additional services is really some of the cornerstone things that you've done. And I really appreciate your time and your commitment to municipal government, and thank you for applying for the position and coming in and being our interim city manager.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other council members wanting to add to that? Deputy Mayor?
Just real quick, I already said most of what I want to say at the staff potluck, but just for the record, you've made me a better council person. And I so appreciate your time and your energy and your commitment for a short job. You really dug in and did some hard work with us, so I really appreciate it.
Anybody else? We can give them a hug afterwards, but any other comments you want to provide? Seeing none? Thank you, thank you, Bob. So we're going to go into executive session for RCW 4230-110-1B. Do we need to leave the meeting open, or are we just going to adjourn after the exec?
It's your choice. You can either make the motion to adjourn following the executive session, or, yeah, no action to follow.
And there's no action following? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn after the executive session?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember McNeil, second by Councilmember Agnew. I don't think we need to vote on this. Well, let's vote. Place your vote. Raise your hand and say aye, if you agree to adjourn after that. Okay, we're in an exec session, we're going to adjourn after the meeting. Passes unanimously.